Call this meeting to order.
I'll just wait for Doris to know.
Any questions on the agenda? Are there any questions on the consent agenda? There's been a couple of people say to me they thought maybe we should spend a little more time on that if people have questions. So if there's anyone that has anything they want answered or... Might explain what the consent agenda is. It's many items that are put on the agenda that really don't need to be discussed by the board. They're routine items and every once in a while a board member wants to check something in particular out, so...
Maybe a comment on the lighting contract. That's been before the county commission, has it not? We went to Health and Ed, went to Finance.
You're talking about the sensors?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, it's already been through Health and Ed, was passed, 7-0, will be back on budget tomorrow night, but for some reason we've got to come bring it back to the board.
The lease purchase.
Yeah, we've got to bring the lease purchase agreement, which Jeff, I think Mr. Jeff Reed's been working in conjunction with Mr. Green.
It's important that, right now, that Health and Ed has given us a thumbs up on that by 7-0 vote and just moving forward.
Yeah. And I suspect, you know, I suspect budgets won't be too late to be premature, but I think...
Mark?
I just wondered if we can't put these bus, whatever they are, on the consent agenda. Someone says trading in the bus and getting a bigger bus. To my knowledge, we've never voted no nor had any serious debate.
Yes, I checked with Mr. Snell. What I stood and suggested be filed.
Well, why don't we do that in the future? And if somebody's got a question on it, they're just ask the question. Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Don?
I haven't had an opportunity to check this IB at Oakland. What's that?
Somebody inquired about, I think, Mr. Doris, I think I've got a correspondence on respect to fees that we charge for IB program. And what I've done is given you a policy that...
Mr. Gill, that's an agenda out of Mr. Doris, and I, there was something else that I looked at and I've taken off on the...
Okay.
Oh, it was a contractual agreement for Blackman loan. That's what it was.
Yeah, and Angel, I think you've looked that over.
I have.
You want to discuss something you want to say to that? Angel, please.
The only thing I would say is that it's pretty much identical to the other agreements that we've done at Oakland for their indoor facility. I can't remember off the top of my head what the other laws that we've had, but...
Was it Riverdale?
Riverdale.
Riverdale turf.
But the provisions are essentially identical to that, structured the same way.
What in Wilson County Bank had one of the contract at Oakland? That's just another issue.
You satisfied with that, Mr. Julian? Any other questions?
I have a question on that contractual agreement on the certified driving rehabilitation specialist. Has that been in place for a number of years?
I just not... Don?
There's a vision impaired student at, obviously, North High School, and the parents have requested that AP team met. We've done this before, but it's not all the time. When one comes up, then that's, since that's the course we offer, then we provide support for that. So it's a question of visually impaired, and I actually talked to the parent myself.
In other words, it's a pretty empty thing before they can get their license in general? Is that what you're talking about?
I don't think this guarantees necessarily they get their license. I mean, that wouldn't be our decision. That's the, I live trouble, there's a testing station, but as far as the course and support for that course, then there are people trained to do this.
But it's just very seldom we see this. It's not routine. That's what I'm...
It has happened before.
It has.
I think of some other circumstances where kids that had physical impairments, where we'd had to make accommodations to, you know, to offer driver opportunities.
Blair?
I've seen a lot of contracts come across our desk before, but this lighting one is about as intricate and complex as I've ever seen. Almost, I was almost expecting them to ask for the first born at some point through the... But it is extremely detailed.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, let's go down to seven.
As I was saying, in front of you, you've got a copy of fees as they pertain to the IB program. And also, on the second page of that document, Angel, Angel and I met with a small group of middle school, elementary, and high school principals to talk about fees. As you recall, what, three, four, five months ago, we got a correspondence from the state basically saying, giving us direction on charging fees, et cetera. And we gave them a list of things that I believe they can charge. Is that what this is, Angel?
Yes.
Yeah. Step up here, summarize the whole issue. Let's go along. I don't...
And I was confused. I think we've all heard from a parent on this, and it always looked pretty clear to me. So, Angel, what Angel's going to talk about?
Actually, Paige, she's going to talk about the second page first, if you will.
Okay.
Essentially, just to clarify, what that second page is, is a list of things that we compiled that schools could request as fees. We keep that list posted on our website. And the second part of that new regulation was that we are required to notify parents of those fees. And the first page that you have is the letter that we send home to all parents explaining, you know, what the regulations were with respect to fees and referring them to the website for our list. And so, that's what we did at the beginning of the year. And I agree with Dr. Burns, to me, that's very clear. We keep that posted so that if there are any questions about anything in particular, you can refer to the website. And so, that was just to give you a sort of a refresher on what we have done already.
What about, talk about graduation, what we know now?
Well, we are, what we know now is that the state board has passed another amendment to the fee requirement, allowing us to charge for graduation fees and caps and gowns and diploma fees, that sort of thing. And they are not going to be categorized as fees under that regulation. Now, that has not gone through the complete approval process, and it will probably be another month or so before that happens, but that's what we anticipate will happen eventually. So, things we thought would be fees to begin with and are included on that list because that was a requirement at the time, will not be and can be charged with respect to graduation.
Blair?
I'll have the high schools handle the calculate, the calculator issue. You know, some of these courses, you know, calculators mandatory for them to be able to work through the, you know, problems. What are they doing now?
To my knowledge, we have not had an issue. Most people are choosing to pay the fee and things have carried on as they did before.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you. Number eight, block schedule, 7-AB.
Several of you have had inquiries about the clarification on the 7-AB block schedule. Mr. Odom and I have met numerous times with the high school principals with respect to expanding from a six-period to a seven-period school day, driven entirely by the fact that state through American Diploma Project increased the number of credits we had. And if we'd have remained on a six-period schedule and had 22 credits, we'd have lost several kids to graduation, which means we probably would have been dinged by No Child Left Behind legislation for not making graduation rates. So that's where we had to expand our offerings. I know everybody's not thrilled with the concept, but, you know, a lot of times, we have to do things that we have to do simply because of legislation from those that are above us. I'd ask Mr. Odom, if you would, to give a quick summary of, you know, what we've done, explain the 7-AB calendar, modified block schedule. I'm showing that to three together and compare that. That might be the easiest way. And we are going to discuss the advantages of a 7-AB, a modified versus a full block.
Are there just two block, the four-by-four and the seven?
Well, there's four-by-four, and then there's a seven. Like, we're using a modified, as I said, on two days a week, there'll be blocks. And you could use a full seven-period block week, but we didn't, I don't think any principals want to do that. We didn't see any real advantage in doing it. But Donald, Mr. Odom explained some of the advantages, what I think we all kind of agree would be better, the three opportunities.
The top line is a straight six-period. That's probably the one you're most familiar with, and of course, in that, each day of the week, you basically have six periods, and that's all year long. A straight seven-period would be seven courses instead of six, and that's all year long. As Mr. Gill said, the driving force with us, with a six-period day, you have 24 opportunities to earn our 23 credits for graduation. We do offer night school, summer school, but those are charge sessions. You really have to offer it during the compulsory attendance day if you really want to pick people up. So, that's what's tried. We had to create something with a seven. There's a, Oakland this year used a 7-AB block. You have one period which is called a skinny period. I just illustrated like period seven. It could be any period of the day. That would meet every day. And then you rotate through blocks, like Monday, 1 through 3, Tuesday, 4 through 6, and you repeat again. It takes a two-week period for every class to meet the same number of sessions. The ones we're proposing next year is a modified 7-AB. It takes something from both the straight period and the AB block. Like, Monday, Monday will be a 1 through 7 period. Tuesday and Wednesday will be a block. That seven is that skinny period. And then Thursday and Friday are 1-7 period. Now, one problem with the 7-AB block that you see above is, for example, you notice that every other day that class meets, if that child happens to meet, miss that day that their block period meets, then they've missed the day before, that day and the day after. So they've been three days automatically without having met the class. So the seven, modified 7-AB block is a combination of several things. It allows additional time for specialty courses, laboratory courses, because when you increase the number of periods, you obviously increase the amount of time you can allocate to each subject.
Mm-hmm.
So what that does, we have longer periods on Tuesday and Wednesday, lab courses. AP teachers say that they need additional time very often for those activities. So, you've got a combination of both together. We, there's some other things that you're kind of talking about. I guess I can, let me kind of flash it up, and then we can go back if you want a little bit. There's, we looked at some advantage. Why did we choose, you know, the whole driving force? Driving force is us more opportunities to acquire credits for graduation. That's why we did this.
Mr. Odom, the American, through the American Diploma Project, they required 22.
And we added one.
We added one, 23, since we went to the seven-period day. There were several reasons for doing that. I think we explained it originally.
Typically, typically, you have what's known as the four list, whatever your credits are. In systems that do four-by-fours and all, where they have eight or 32 opportunities, they usually require 28 credits. That wasn't particularly attractive to us. Plus, it contributes to that, that the American system is getting a mile wide and inch deep. You know, you're still reducing the amount of time that you can cover a course. Sometimes you're better to not cover as many courses and cover the ones you have in more detail, which is what they do in a lot of Asia and Europe. And number two there, one thing by using some block and some of the other, it minimizes instructional changes for teachers and students with only two blocks of block schedule. In other words, we're kind of in between the two. So you don't have teachers having to go to a total block schedule when they're familiar with a six-period. We do have training planned. There's training planned in May for the teachers. Three of the people in the summer conference this year will be talking about the block system. The first day of in-service for high schools next fall is teaching on the block system. So we're spending some funds and all to train teachers on the block system. Another, provides extended class time, which I mentioned for that, includes advantages from both block and traditional, minimize additional costs except for necessary teacher training on the block system. We're not having to change a lot of things other than the training cost for our teachers by doing this. It positions us for additional changes if needed. If at some point you want to do more blocks, our teachers will have had a time teaching on some block and some of the straight periods. So it shouldn't be nearly the jump in going from an all-six-period straight system to a block system. You've got some of both to transition. One of the things that convinced us some was if you look at Hume-Fogg in Nashville, been using a 7-AB block. We've visited them, several of our principals have visited them. I think they're in the top 25 schools in the nation, you know, in their achievement there. You know, and you say immediately, well, that's a magnet school. Interesting thing, when we visited him, he says, "We require all of our students at this magnet school to complete calculus." He said, "Even my fine art students." So they've gotten very creative using this 7-AB block, and that's what we share with our principals. He takes those students that are not math background people and are struggling a little bit with that, and he has, his teachers, some of them teach five periods, have one study hall in their classroom. So he double-doses, or he recycles some of these kids that might have difficulty in a course into that teacher's study hall to get specific help. Say it were, if it's calculus or something. So by using this schedule creatively and with the extra periods it's created, you know, they're really not losing people. They're providing support to the students. So, that was a real advantage that's working very close to us that we could look at.
Who decides what is taught in that seventh period? Is that the principal, or is it varied by grade, or by school, or...
Some of them will probably not use seven. I did it for illustrative purposes. We did not dictate to them which period. Because some of them, because of their lunch schedules and the number they're serving, some of them are telling us that we really need to use that period around our lunchtime to work through the lunch schedule.
Whenever it is, what determines what's done during that period?
Well, it's a class period. It'll just be about probably somewhere between 45 and 50 minutes length. It's be just like your six-period day, any class, or seven-period day, any class, only when you have an AB block, because you have an odd number, there's one out. You've got six periods that are rotating, and they'll look at the courses, I'm sure, and try to avoid some of the ones like the labs and some of the things that they need in, maybe some APs to skip in those AB blocks, the ones that really need that additional time.
Okay, so it's not really based on the content necessarily? It's more about getting the right number of minutes in each?
Yes, yes.
Doris?
I've had two questions. One's pretty basic, and the other is, I think troublesome to the student. First, the basic question, is it's the size of our schools moving from one class to the next? Are they going to have difficulty getting from one classroom to the next classroom during, in 10 minutes, if that's what the time...
I think what they do, historically, they build in the amount of time needed. I don't think that'll change in this schedule. I think they'll still get the same amount of minutes to go from class one to two to three to four. As I think Don may have said, on the days you've got the blocks, you eliminate three or four travels, which is a good thing. You cut back on the minutes.
But the Monday, Thursday, Friday, it looks pretty tight.
And that's one of the disadvantages of a straight schedule. Honestly, if you asked me to write a paper on a block schedule, there's so many different schedules in the United States. There's enough research to prove whatever you want to prove.
Right.
Honestly. If they were one optimal schedule that students really learned, it would have been in place across this country at any given time. Some are coming on blocks, another group's going off blocks. You know, the fellow at New Superintendent Dixon County called me earlier and said, you know, "What are y'all doing? Your scores look good in the..." You know, when he looked on the report card and all, he says, "We've been doing the four-by-four block, and I'm leaving it. You know, it's not working for us." So, it's really kind of what works for you. You just can't say there's one optimal schedule. But the more times you change classes, you do lose some time. We're recapturing some of that by having some block days in there, as Mr. Gill said.
Rick, the second question I've got maybe to talk about, is the academic side, seven classes, Monday, Thursday, Friday, what if you've got homework in all seven of them?
That's another downside of a straight six or a straight seven, because it's the number of classes the student has to take, unless they're doing something like they're doing at Hume-Fogg, where one of those might not be another credit class, but simply a double-dosing or a building of another one. So I hope with some of this creativity that we can, that they might not be taking a totally new class that requires homework, but might be in support of a subject that they're having difficulty doing. So, there's a couple of ways to do that.
Mr. Blair?
The actual school day remains the same?
Yes, sir, seven hours.
Any other questions? Thank you. Number eight, finance, or number nine, financial matters.
Rough County Schools, what do you mean? The October 15, 2009, school board meeting, the following request was forwarded to the county commission to prove Excel Energy Group, $2,337,515 proposed for occupancy centers contingent on state approval of the System of Efficient Schools Initiative grant of This is free money to the school system, and the county commission's approval of financing the balance of $1,596,035. State has approved our grant, but the loan documents for the program will not be available five, seven more months. We're asking to forward to the commission the seven-year lease purchase plan Mr. Green's firm has prepared. Mr. Reed has approved the lease purchase and energy consulting agreements. Financing terms of this $2,337,515 proposal match the terms that were approved in October. This would be temporary funding until the loans through the state are ready. $741,480 in Energy Efficient Grants Initiative money, $500,000 at 0% for seven years, $1,096,035 at 3% for seven years. County commission will, of course, make the final financing decision, and I will recommend that you approve the Energy Services Agreement and Lease Purchase Agreement with Excel Energy Group Incorporated in a final form as approved by the board attorney, Mr. Jeff Reed, and to adopt a resolution authorizing the same with Excel Energy Group Incorporated, both subject to final approval by the county commission. Mr. Reed's here, if there's anybody who's got any questions for you.
Questions? Any questions? That's an easy one. All right. Number 10, transportation.
Jeff, I don't guess you get any television time tonight.
I'm just wondering.
Well, you can come up.
I'm working on that.
You can come up and just talk a little bit if you want.
Wore your best tie tonight, didn't you? Transportation. Diane Eubank, Bus 105 replaced her 20-passenger bus with a new 25-passenger bus on February 16, 2010. We have received a formal request from Mrs. Eubank dated February 16, 2010 to change this bus to a 25-passenger bus for payroll, for payment purposes. This will increase Mrs. Eubank's pay by a total of $1,589 through the remainder of the school year. And recommend that you approve the request to change Bus 105 from a 20 to a 25-passenger for payment purposes. Second, with Miss Bessie Lane, Bus 99 replaced her 20-passenger bus with a 25-passenger bus on February 16, 2010. We received a formal request from Miss Lane dated February 16, 2010 to change this bus to a 25-passenger for payment purposes. This will increase Miss Lane's pay by a total of $1,589 for the remainder of the year. We recommend that you approve that.
Any questions on that? How are we on the numbers of ones that have upgraded now? How many are left? Can you, right offhand? I think you probably could. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I knew that we've had quite a few that have upgraded. Doris?
Well, I asked Rick this question, transitioning the radios and this other equipment that we authorize for our buses, is that gone smoothly with their contractor?
Yes, contractors require to make their own radio swaps, and we swap the cameras ourselves. And there's been, you know, not even problems with regards to that.
That company's been really good, haven't they? We haven't, I don't think we've had a complaint about cameras at all. Not to me, I haven't heard any.
We've had some issues with regards to, you know, we have to go, we go to their houses and things, but we've worked through them.
Any other questions? Okay, general discussion by the board.
I've got one I need to start out with, if I could, Wayne.
Sure.
I got a, first of all, I guess everyone has either heard or perhaps read the article that's in the paper today, where the steering committee asked us, asked me and the board to give us, to give our opinion on whether the school board ought to have taxation rights. And I asked Angel to call TSBA today, and matter of fact, Mayor Burgess called me about 12:30 today in connection with this whole scenario. But there's, and I want you to step up here, Angel, but there's apparently legislation that's, could be acted on, that would allow county schools to become special school districts, and school boards have taxing authority. Now, you know, we've had kind of, at some point, we've had some discussions on that over time, but Ernest, or Mayor Burgess, and the steering committee wants us to weigh in on it and give them our official opinion as it relates to our being the taxing, having taxing authority. Now, what, Angel, your conversations with them, what else can you add to that?
Well, essentially, what TSBA said was that this is something that they've been pushing for, for about four years, so it's not new. It is one of their top priorities this year. But what it would do, the statute, there's a statute in place now that prohibits school districts from converting to special school systems. So this, this new legislation would remove that prohibition and allow them to convert to a special school district. And my understanding from Randy Bennett was that you wouldn't, if it passed, you wouldn't have taxing authority per se. There would be a range set by the legislature, and then the, and local boards would then be able to set something within that range. And his information to me was that this is sort of just a first step, that there would have to be several other things in place if this passed before it really got to the point where you would have that ability. He did not think that it would jeopardize or change in any way the funding mechanisms that are in place now with state and federal funding.
But ultimately, Mayor Burgess thought, even though we could eventually become a special school district and have some semblance of taxing authority, you still would have to go through the general assembly, as you say. Otherwise, there'd be checks and balances in place.
Yes.
That may be more stringent than what we're faced with now.
Could be.
Yeah.
Question, Doris?
You know, I'm not running because of this, but running away from this by not seeking reelection. But ever since I came on the school board, this is one of the things that I have strongly favored. As we make budgets, if I'm a body, a part of the body that makes budgets, then I should be a part of the body who goes to the public asking for the funding. I just think if we need, the board needs to be responsible for the funding issue as to the public. You know, we can prepare a budget, we can send it to the county commission. If they don't approve it, we put the blame on them. President Truman says the buck stops here. Well, if the school system has funding authority, then the buck stops here with the school board. And I just feel very strongly that's where it needs to be.
That's okay. A comment about this, what the delegates at the conference back in November, this is kind of a derivative of that, because, you know, it was just a pure policy that went to the legislature, giving boards across the state taxing authorities. So this is kind of a little different way... So this is kind of a little different way of putting it to the legislature. But having said that, I wanted to double-check with all board members, is everyone receiving the TSBA legislative updates? Does everybody get that through their email? Okay. Because I know I forward them sometimes, so you're probably getting a redundant, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was getting them. The other thing, have we heard anything else about the race to the top, how the application process with the state, and any, anything new on the horizon with that, with those dollars?
I think we've gotten wind, it looks, there's a high probability we'll actually be getting funds. I think I told you how it would be disseminated, we get a small portion of it, six, six and a half million over, out of 200, out of 500 million. We're in the process, application due wind, Don, do you know?
The state has to get approval for their areas.
Yeah.
And then school systems will then have the opportunity, we will look for it.
Yeah. We won't have a lot of time to submit the plan.
Supposedly 90 days after the study.
Yeah.
But those funds are going to be, again, they're going to have, they'll be probably put towards Title I and special education.
And the allocation's based on your title enrollment, which is why Memphis is getting 130 million, or whatever it is, 122 million, Asheville 58, Hamilton 25, out of the 250 million dollars. You know, most of it's spent up before, you know, and here we are, about the 5th, largest district Tennessee, with 38 down, kid, we'll only get six and a half million spread out over four years. And what's kind of disappointing and discouraging is that we'll be held to the same protocol as other districts that are getting all this money. Now, that'd be, the state will take 250 million right off the top, the other 250 million, they'll divide amongst schools. The 250 million they take will be, I presume, dedicated in a large part to taking over failing districts, which may correlate to the same districts that are getting the, all the dollars to begin with. So in retrospect, they're getting, you know, they're getting 90% of the money, the rest of the other 130 systems are splitting up the other 10%. It's kind of a hard pill to swallow.
Getting back to the other situation with the taxing authority, sometimes you better, you know, watch out what you wish for, you might get it. Doris, I think probably in the last eight years, I've disagreed with you maybe one time on anything. This is one I disagree with you on. I feel like that it's a good check, check and balance between the county commission and us. We've worked very well together. Sometimes I think we've got too many people with taxing authority now. So that's just my thought of it, and I understand where you're coming from, but I didn't know, do they want us to take a stand on and come back with it?
Yeah, I think he does. I mean, matter of fact, I said, how long do we have? He said, he wants to send them a response, about 30 days. So I think they'd like to have something back to steering committee, so that they can forward our thoughts on to the legislature. You know, one of the things about it is, it does concern me that, I mean, you know, there is some appeal to saying you've got taxing authority. You know, we've all sat down and made out budgets, planned tiers, know we go down there and know that we're not going to ultimately get everything, we start chopping. I mean, in retrospect, I guess we could tax people where we could actually make our budget. But if we're still going to have to go to the general assembly for some kind of final blessing, I mean, could we be, it'd be nice to know what the ramification of going down there would be. I mean, I hate to shoot ourselves in the foot and say, well, we're going, we're in favor of it, and it not be a good thing for us.
Doris wants to say something, she's going to respond to me, I think.
I forget the exact numbers, 50 states, I think there are 11 states out of the 50 that don't have taxing authority. 39 states have given school boards taxing authority. I don't see school boards being lavish with money. They're not, if you put the burden on me, I'm going to get tighter with it. I'm going to be more concerned about how we're utilizing these dollars. Not that we aren't, but we're really going to take it personal. I have children living in Atlanta, or in the Atlanta area, I go there, I read the paper, I see how Georgia, with taxing authority, how they are utilizing these dollars. And they have the same crunches that we have, not enough state money, et cetera, et cetera. But I see a progressive education system there, doing things that, you know, very similar to us, but every time they approach the public, the public has responded favorably to them on this, on taxing issues, because they have spoken, they have proven the need to the constituents, and the constituents, if called to vote, do this. I saw an example in Nashville, though, where they did not, but I just think it's the right way to go.
I didn't say you were wrong, I just said I disagreed with it. Mark, you got a chance?
I don't know what that means. I'm for this change. I think it'll make being a board member harder, there's no doubt about that. I mean, we're going to get the usual complaints that we have been getting, and then we'll get complaints about whatever taxing decisions we make. But right now, you know, we're held rightly accountable for the school system, and yet we don't have the authority to decide how much we're going to spend. To me, that is nonsensical. All we can do is go ask the commission. Yeah, that's a check and balance, but all these many school boards that have taxing authority are also, I mean, there are a variety of ways of doing it, but they're all checked in some respect. And even in addition to that, we're going to be checked by the public. It's the way the commission is now, there's no check on them. They can raise taxes to whatever degree they want. I guess some people would say they've risen, risen too quickly, but, you know, I don't see much evidence of that, so I hope we, are we going to have a vote at some point?
Well, I think we should, I think we probably should.
I think we need to. Maybe it's early tomorrow night. I would like to do some digging tomorrow with respect to what would happen at the general assembly, and what, you know, what the parameters are, you know, or how we do increase taxes. So maybe we could rattle Bennett to kind of dig into that one.
One thing I did not say is that if it passes, it will be permissive, not mandatory. So it will still be at the local level to decide whether you can choose to convert and have the authority or not. So just so you know, when you send your response, if it passes, it won't be repelled.
Do you have to give permission for the county commission to do it? That'd be a question, it might be from them.
Are we actually going to write a resolution and send it to the commission, or we're just going to jump on board with whatever they send to the state? How are we going to do this?
If he didn't, Mayor Burgess wasn't that specific, he asked us to come forward with an opinion or thought, we'll try to put something together that's not embarrassing, but try to travel.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Do you have any wisdom for this, Mr. Journey?
Well, not wisdom, but I have some thoughts on it.
All right.
I think about this, and I think, you know, the majority of states have a state income tax, too. We don't. We've done quite well. A lot of people like to come to Tennessee because of it. But there's another reason they like to come to Tennessee, especially to Rutherford County, and that is our school system. So what we have funded, and what the county has funded with this mechanism, undoubtedly has worked pretty well. So I, and another thing I was thinking about, the more you send to Nashville to be decided, the further removed it is from
Local.
the people who are having to carry the load. And then when you send it on to Washington, it's even further. So I'm hesitant about, about saying this is the thing to do. And what we have, I mean, we're sitting in a pretty nice building here, and I have talked to a lot of people, and our students are going into pretty nice facilities throughout this county. And undoubtedly, teachers are pretty well satisfied. I mean, every time we have a job fair, that they come by droves from all over the nation. And someone said that we have, I've heard, had 1,500 applications for Central Magnet So, you know, there used to be a sign in my office that a student gave me, and it's very simple, but a lot of people have it, and that is, if it works, don't fix it. And it seems to be working pretty good here.
Doris?
There's another sign I like that says, embrace change.
Well, it's, looks like two to two on this side. Any discussion on the other side? I know, I think I know how much Blair feels, but I'm not speaking for him, he can speak for himself. Any other discussion?
You can't get away from it.
All right, go ahead.
I can't not say something about good things. If, we all got the compass letter. I just wish that we would say something nice about Central, and they're caring for a student. I know it takes place in every school, but these kinds of things just are heartwarming to me. And they speak tons about what our staff people are doing, and I'm just so very proud of them for taking time to reach out to students and help them in a time of need. And this other part of the compass letter says, as of February 19, we have identified and served 630 Atlas students. Last year, on this date, we had identified and served 550 people in need that our school system is reaching out to and helping. I just, it just makes you feel good about what's taking place.
And Atlas kids and students considered homeless. What was the number again, 630 that were served?
630.
630 kids.
Living in a car, living in a hotel.
These kids are considered homeless in Rutherford County.
So we don't know about those things unless we talk about it a little bit, and I just, I love what we're doing.
You had another letter over there from a lady in...
I've gotten letters, I've gotten emails, it's very rare that anybody writes a letter and says, "Attaboy." A lady in Laverne has written us about one of her teachers, and I'm just so proud of this lady. Sometimes I wish she would come and stand at this podium and say the same thing, but I just, you know, that's another feel-good. And I'm glad we, I'm glad they're out there, and there are a lot of them out there, but...
There's a lot of parents out there that are grateful to their teachers
There are.
for what service they provide the kid. And unfortunately, we don't hear from them as much as we do the one or two that are dissatisfied with something that's going on. You know, we, like I say, we've got a lot of quality teachers that do go miles beyond what their responsibilities are to help kids.
I would like to compliment you on your crystal ball. I know there are probably some parents that second-guessed you on some of your calls, but for the snow days this year, you got every one of them right, so congratulations.
Thank you, I felt like we did. I got one hateful email one morning, and about 10 o'clock, said, hey, dummy, where's the snow? And I got up and did a snow dance, and lo and behold, two hours later, it started snowing. I looked pretty smart at that time, anyway. Yeah, but I appreciate this, Blair, it's always a tough call, you make about half of them happy and half of them mad.
All right, any other discussion? All minds at ease.